I'd like to call to the Board, this meeting in Cedarburg Board of Education, this is a regular board meeting. The date is May 20th, 7:00 PM. This meeting has been noticed in the district and copies were also forwarded to the New York Graphic Milwaukee Journal Center. Everyone please rise and join me in the table. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which this stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Alright, you have in front of you committee assignments and special assignments for board members, including personnel, finance, community ground policy, curriculum, communications, etc. These are identical to last year's committee appointments. I haven't heard from any of them that they would like to change anything, so I think they're going well. So with that said, I will first take a motion to approve the committee assignment.
I'll move to approve the day's assignment.
Second. Motion in the second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Against, motion carries. That fellow takes a motion to approve the special assignments.
I'll move to approve the special assignments.
Second. Second all those in favor?
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Alright. Thank you very much, next, Mr. Kennedy, voice positions.
Sure. Mental health and wellness awareness week proclamation for 2015. Whereas addressing the complex mental health needs of children, youth, and families today is fundamental to the future of Cedarburg, whereas the needs for comprehensive coordinated mental health services for children, youth, and families places upon our community a critical responsibility. Whereas it is appropriate that a week should be set apart each year for the direction of our thoughts towards our children's mental health and well-being. Whereas Cedarburg School District through its unique approach to serving children and adolescents is effectively caring for the mental health needs of children, youth, and families in our community. Now therefore, I, the Cedarburg School Board hereby proclaim May 18th to 22nd, 2015, to be Mental Health and Wellness Awareness Week and urge our citizens and all agencies and organizations interested in meeting every child's mental health needs to unite this week in the excellence of such exercises as will appoint the people of Cedarburg with the fundamental necessity of programming for children and youth with mental health needs and their families.
Thank you, Kevin. Alright, next is the consent agenda.
In your package, copy of the minutes and regular meeting dated April 27th, as well as budget and finance. We haven't obtained any questions on those two items at this time. Hearing none. Yes, here's our practice, I'd like Ash Condon, please, to read personnel reports and two minutes.
This evening we have a couple support staff resignations. Barbara Paddock, Principal of Westlon, indicated she'll be retiring at the end of this year. We'd like to thank Barbara for many years of service to the Westlon community and the larger Cedarburg learning community. And Susan Ernst, also a aide of Webster, indicated she'll be resigning at the end of this year. And April Elsesser has been hired as a parlay at Webster. So those are all support staff changes.
Just a second, for them to the minutes, I think you said that Barbara was Principal of Westlon?
Did I?
If you have a second to that.
I had no problem with that.
Wow.
Yes. That's funny.
But to put that to the audience, Barbara's the secretary of the board.
As the secretary, I'm also the lead.
Well, it certainly was a team effort, but I think we missed out. So we thank Barbara for years as a secretary. I guess I'm so excited about the next announcements that I jumped in a little bit. We're very happy to announce that we've got three teachers that we're adding at the high school. Michael Hendricks is a math teacher, Kevin Condon is a social studies teacher, and Matthew Hoffman is a social studies teacher. So they have all indicated that they are willing to join the Cedarburg team. And we are especially excited this evening to be welcoming two new administrators. Quite a bit of work gone into the last few months. I gave a little background information on both of these hires, just for the board's information. We have 55 applicants for the Westlon elementary position. We formed a committee to review those. We had a number of administrators screen those applications, spending many, many hours reviewing all of those apps. That team then narrowed the field to five candidates that were brought in for interviews. We had a 13-member team that conducted the first round of interviews. That group consisting of John Lammersen, Todd McMankey, Angela Little, Jane Holt, Tony DeRosa, Lisa Ganser, and Kazuba, and Gerke, Colin Huber, Julie Apple, Rachel Yurk, Ellen Growth, and myself. I can't say enough to the people who took time out of their day to participate in that process and be a part of that team. Really appreciate the job that they did. A lot of deep discussion went into it. Very serious hire, and it was a really good experience. So we had some strong representation on that committee and had a rather large group than we would normally do, but we just felt the nature of the position warranted that. That first round interview then recommended three finalists for a second round. And the second round team of John Lammersen, Todd McMankey, Ellen Growth, and myself did another set of interviews. Another pretty set of grueling questions. We asked candidates also to do some presentations to help us identify how they would be as far as a fit goes with the district. Further deliberations, reference checks, looking into some other background areas. And we unanimously agreed that Katie Roberts would be the best fit to succeed PBA at Westlon. Katie's coming to us from Little Creek Franklin School District. She's been a principal there and an interventionist there. Outstanding credentials and recommendations, incredible background in literacy and interventions, great building leader. And we're just incredibly excited to have her here this evening and to present a contract for her.
I'll just jump in and say if you were a side boss.
That's your boss. It's been a huge process and a lot of times dedicated process, as the candidate said. Katie is an ideal candidate for the Westlon principalship. She is all about culture, all about climate, and all about relationships. And those of you who maybe noticed when she met PJ, first thing she did, PJ's giving her love. And because PJ certainly has great success as a staff and students, I love PJ. And during the meeting process, Katie had indicated that PJ is a loved administrator. And it's good having that kind of mindset coming in, and that's going to ease and certainly hopefully minimize any anxiety that the staff and students and parents have. Because Katie has that mindset, very similar with PJ. It's about relationships, it's about culture, it's about a healthy environment. So we're shooting a piece to have Katie join our team. Katie, would you like to say a couple words?
I can use my teacher voice, can you all hear me?
Okay.
Thank you so much, I'm excited about the opportunity. It's definitely an interesting homecoming for me. I started my educational career at Westlon. Went to kindergarten there, so I am excited to find the first person who can find that yearbook for my kindergarten concert. So, and you know, my family is rooted in Cedarburg. My mom was a principal at Parkview in the eighties. And another family who's near and dear to the district really helped raise me, and that's the Roberts family, Ellen and Anna. So relocated to St. Louis, came back to Wisconsin for college, went to Madison. And it's, now that I have a family of my own, this is where we wanted to get back to. So we're very excited to be a part of the community. I'm very excited to be a part of the, you know, the group that can give back to what I got from the community. So really excited to work with everybody. Thank you so much for the opportunity. And do you have any questions for me at this time?
No. I'll answer for the board.
Didn't we ask enough questions over the last couple of weeks, right?
You did.
We were asking for that. Thanks, Katie.
Thank you.
Also this evening, we are incredibly excited to be recommending a contract for the People's Services Director position. Ted Noel is also here this evening. That process involved application number of 37. We again had a team of administrators that screened those apps down to four candidates for first round. This first round interview team was the largest I've ever been a part of in my 20-plus years in administration. We had 16 individuals representing administration, psychologists, parents, department secretary, speech pass, counselors, and special education teachers. So John Lammersen, Todd McMankey, Angela Little, Jane Holt, Tony DeRosa, Rachel Yurk, Ellen Growth, Don Perth, Eric Olson, Erica Martunia, Jeff Nelson, Karen Ward, Mary Porter, Nicole Kicker, Pat Torson, Roberta Koleski, and Sarah St. Collins, Susan Walttrich, Walttrich, and myself. Again, I can't say enough about that group. We barely fit them in the room. The candidates were not scared away. Took a little bit of butter to get them through the door and get them to sit down, but they did a great job. This was a big position for the district, as you know, we haven't had anybody all year. So I can't even really contain my enthusiasm to see Ted and ask him if he could start next week. But he does have to wait until July 1st, unfortunately. But Ted comes with Brown Dare with a few years of experience there as People's Services Director. And he was also in Fox Point Bayside for many years before that, I think it was 14 total, and at 15. And similar roles there as a school psychologist and people services coordinator. So vast experience, highly, highly regarded in the area, very well-known. And we couldn't be more pleased about adding both Ted and Katie to our team. So it's with great enthusiasm, and before I make a recommendation, I should pause again.
Sure. Thanks for pausing, Mr. Frogger. I just want to say a couple of words about Ted. Ted and I have known each other for a number of years, and it's our paths across the conferences and workshops and seminars and graduate classes. And I always have been impressed with his thinking, his mindset, his knowledge of strategic planning. And those are all things that certainly benefit the district. When we began this process, I was hoping to find a people services candidate that would think beyond the traditional role of people services. One who understood curriculum instruction, teaching and learning, and Ted brings that to the district. And that's unique, you don't find that in many people services directors, a lot of them are kind of siloed, taking care of people services. Ted has the mindset that he skills well beyond people services and can have immediate impact on our teachers and kids and our administrative team. He's a collaborative leader and he's going to be a great asset, and has been a good asset in his former district and will be a great asset here. Just two comments about the candidates, well, I guess I'll wait until after Ted says the three words, Ted.
I'll skip the mic as well, since I'm such a big guy. Thank you very much for this opportunity as well. It was a great process, even though it was a large first interview and it was very intimidating. You know, it's a bit scary. It was a great process, very class. Mr. McMankey and Mr. Carter ran a great process, I was very impressed by it. And I knew just by that process, the way they handled themselves, it was a class organization. The tone of what I saw and then the interpretation was very, very impressive to me. So, you know, every resignation and when you leave is bittersweet and just enthusiasm and a great spirit of the entrances really kind of lessened that anxiety for me. And I'm looking forward to this coming here. Thank you.
Just a couple of final words about the candidates. Both of these candidates were interviewing us as much as we are interviewing them. And either one was necessarily interested in moving out of the district. But when this opportunity surfaced and they noticed what great things are happening in Cedarburg, they obviously dug the deeper and applied and had now landed this position. And it's an emotional time for them to leave their current positions. And we spoke in the gate about how that's worked out in her current building, and the teachers are very sad to see her go. And I spoke to Ted, the superintendent there, and she, Ted Fair in Brown Dare is very sad to see him go as well. And we're thrilled that they're joining our team. And I know that their respective school district will find decent, obviously replacements. I'm happy that they continue to contribute to the greater goal of public education. And that's what I said to their superintendents outside of here. You're losing some of your best individuals, but we're thrilled to be here in Cedarburg. And I'm also just ecstatic that they are going to continue to contribute to public education. So I welcome both of them and look forward to them joining the team and contributing to the great things here in Cedarburg.
And I, it was just like that, it was enjoyable to be a part of the process. And I always look administratively for folks that elevate the profession, that make it better because they're part of it. And in this case, that's absolutely evident. I'm very, very happy for the district, for the faculty, the teachers will be working alongside you. But I'm happy as for our kids. I think our students are going to feel your imprint and your effect from day one. Continuing the wonderful things that are going on in the district will just be able to now move to continue that, but move to the next level. So I wish you the best. It was, I wish that our time together was a little longer than just the interview process. But I know you'll do an absolutely wonderful job. And the Cedarburg family is like vanilla in terms of caring for one another, trying to focus on what's best for kids. And working to the best ends that we can possibly provide for kids. So you've landed in just an incredible place, so all the best to them.
And just a final little anecdote. When we go through the process of hiring, I think it's a lot more intense and somewhat deeply personal, more than a lot of people realize. There's a lot of back and forth, you know, when you review an application, you feel like you're looking into somebody's life. And they put a lot into it, they put a lot out there about themselves, and you start learning about a person before you even see their face. But through the whole conversation of setting up appointments, talking with them, making reference checks, emails, back and forth, I have to say, the commitment of these two people to their current employer and students and teammates is impressive. And that's something that a lot of people may not think that you're looking at as you're interviewing them, because you're thinking about more how they're going to be as part of your team. But I always look and see how aligned they're to their current team, and these two epitomize that. Everything about their, this process, they were always being sensitive to where they are currently. And that speaks a lot to them, and those are the kind of people that we're excited about bringing on board. So with that, we recommend that the board approve the five professional contracts presented to you this evening.
I'll move to approve the consent agenda, including the five professional contracts.
Second, Ted. Motion in the second, just a little bit of discussion. Just wanted to thank the staff for keeping the board updated and everything. You guys are doing all the heavy lifting here, of course, but as you went through the process, as you were getting down in the candidates and sharing their information, you know, the resumes, everything that you guys were doing really kept us in the loop, you know, while we weren't involved, we were very informed. So I really appreciate how you guys went about that, and it's very, very helpful. So with that said, is there any other discussion? Alright, I have a motion in the second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Against, motion carries, and we say.
Thank you.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright. Moving right along, reports and recommendations.
For second, recommend the Board of Education accept grant from Cedarburg for tools for schools program to grant the tools for $2,278.54 are from Snap-on Industrial and are to be used by Cedarburg High School Auto Tech Program.
Move to approve. Second. Motion in the second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Next, I recommend the Board of Education accept an anonymous donation of $500 to be used by Cedarburg High School for the Alyssa Dorfler Scholarship Fund.
Move to approve. Second. Motion in the second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Next, recommend the Board of Education accept a $1,500 donation from Ken and Yvonne Osterman with a matching grant of $1,500 from Harley Davidson to be used by Cedarburg High School for its band program.
Move to approve. Second. Motion in the second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Very thank you. And we move on to the, Karen. For the public depository schools' funds.
It is recommended the Board approve the resolution designating banks and institutions as public depositories. This includes BMO Harris, US Bank, Local Government Investment Pool, Wisconsin, and Wisconsin Investment Series Cooperative.
Move to approve. Second. Motion in the second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Karen, E, carries.
This is to formally approve the increase in the employee premium share for dental to 12.6%. This was approved last night, or maybe last month. What I need here is, I'd just like to have a formal approval. It's good for historical tracking in case anyone asks a question.
I'll move to approve. Second. Motion in the second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Alright, Dr. Menjerson, item passed.
On the next item is a recommendation from the negotiating team that the Board is aware of. The document is required and is similar accepted dollar amount to the documents approved by the Board for the previous adjustments in teacher wages. Recommend that the Board of Education approve this resolution for the benefit, if approved this evening, which we hope, I believe the salary adjustments Karen, or we hope to make them by the end of.
They're scheduled for June 15th.
Can we agree that resolution is a, sure. Sure. Okay. Resolution of Board of Education and School District Board of Education, whereas representatives of the Cedarburg School District Board of Education herein board and the Cedarburg School District Education Association herein association have been engaged in negotiations for the 2014-15 collective bargaining agreement between the parties. And whereas the association has not accepted the Board's last base wage offer for the 2014-15 school year. And whereas, following a negotiating session on May 6th, 2015, the association negotiating team informed the Board that the parties are at impasse. And therefore, we have resolved by the Cedarburg School District Board of Education that one, the Board declares that the parties are at impasse in negotiations over the 2014-15 collective bargaining agreement between the Board and the association. Two, the Board's last offer of increasing teacher wages by $152,734 is to be distributed to eligible teachers who return for the 2014-15 school year or retire for the district's retirement benefits based on performance with the potential for extra pay to newer teachers and that this offer be implemented as soon as practical. And three, this offer be incorporated in the 2014-15 collective bargaining agreement along with its duration. Adopted, Cedarburg School District Board of Education.
Thank you. Any discussion? I'll make a motion. Alright, we have motion. I'll second.
Are there motions to approve it?
Yes, approve that petition, as presented in the rap. Motion in the second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Dr. Lammersen, you have a vote.
There are two items. First one, SMART Team, and then I'd like to make special mention of recognition of Westlon. The first item regarding SMART Team, and I'll just go through to add to this. We received confirmation that Karen Tiffany, Cedarburg High School science teacher, for I think it's the seventh year now, since 2008, 2009, has been a part of SMART Team, which stands for Students Modeling Your Research Topic. This research topic is and program is a part of the Milwaukee School of Engineering Center for Biomolecular Modeling. Karen received a letter from the director expressing appreciation for Karen's continuation of the program for these several years, for her outstanding dedication and for the remarkable students that she brings from Cedarburg High School. So we wanted to make sure that we recognized Karen for efforts in terms of providing this extended opportunity for students, not only in terms of the quality of education, but the quality of students that she has provided in the program. So we want to make sure that she were aware of this and knowledge of this. Is there anything else you have?
Nothing else, other than maybe just drawing attention to the picture there. And when we notice the camera is, they're drawing females. That's nice to draw females into the sciences.
Secondly, an item that is not on the agenda because it didn't make it for the posting is an acknowledgement for Westlon. PJ sent this to me, but I wanted to make sure that you were aware of it. The announcement that we made is that Westlon will be recognized as an emerging state school of character when the Wisconsin Character Education Partnership convenes its annual conference next month at Albino College in Milwaukee. The award that we presented is an acknowledgement of the work of the staff at Westlon has been to embrace the 11 principles that form the foundation of character education partnership at both the state and national levels. A big congratulations to Westlon and the leadership under PJ. Congratulations. Is there anything else to add, PJ? Would be good for the board to be aware of regarding this announcement? Or should we ask Barbara?
Just that I anticipate that although what the staff has done in the past number of years with character education and the recognition that we're being perceived statewide and acting in a legitimate way. It's a great foundation, a great foundation to have, and we're all in the way.
Awesome. Very impressive.
Good superintendent notes.
Alright. Is there anyone in the public that would like to come up and speak? Anyone or anything at all? Alright. With that said, we'll move on to committee reports. Personnel, Finance Committee, Mr. Bray is not here. Kevin, would you like to confirm?
I think so, sir. I'll take it forward.
Go ahead.
Sure. Yeah, we discussed a variety of topics, primarily the budget recommendations and concerns. Specifically those as it related to some of the fees that we discussed, the activity fees, the parking fees. We decided to basically table those things until June, until we had more information on the budget. It seems like that news is probably right around the corner for us. So again, we'll table those at the June meeting. We also discussed some of the insurance updates, some of which you've heard today. The bank depository resolution, which we again talked about today. That was on the agenda last week. And then we talked a little bit about some of the kindergarten class sizes, which we'll pick up over the next couple of months as well. So those are basically the topics that we discussed last week.
Great. Alright, moving on to Policy Committee. Rex, you guys done yet?
We're getting there. We have, we have policies from zero to 4,000 is done already. Next meeting, we're looking at fives and sixes. And even further, if we get them seven and eights on the following, nine thousands, which is the end of following. So we hope to have before 4th of July. That's our, that's our goal, we see if we made it. We have three meetings set, and if we follow our timeline into those meetings, we will be done. We'll actually be happy if I.
Maybe break that, though, we'll be done. It's alright. Just for the public, can you guys just estimate how many policies you've gone through, how many you have to do, to fall market?
There's 570. We're probably 280, 290, something like that. A little over half. Actually, might even be a lot higher. The student section is the hardest, has the most, and that's the upcoming year, so we're getting it.
I really appreciate you guys doing that. I observed it for a little bit. Quite that was a boring exercise, but very important. You know, diving into it and taking it very seriously, so.
We are very good with words like shall, will, and may.
I was very surprised that no one asked to get back to the Policy Committee. I was surprised no one asked to go.
And I guarantee you will not find the word vehemently anywhere in there because Mr. Kiris had all those remarks, so. Because we're good. Vigorously. Is it vigorously? Vigorously. Okay, vigorously.
You mean, ladies and gentlemen.
We have, we have.
We're replacing.
We gotta start over now.
Alright, well, thank you guys. And negotiations report, Kevin, do you have?
Just a little bit of background for people who weren't aware, but we did have two negotiation deals with the CBA. It was very clear in the first meeting that we agreed on the percentage of increase. The percent amount specified, we agreed on, the 1.46. The debate was really about how it can apply to individual teachers, whether it be just a straight 1.46% of salary plus the board. So if higher paid teachers get a higher net dollar amount than the board. get the higher net dollar amount of the working teachers. The board, uh, was, you all know, has changed that concept for our staff several years ago, uh, so that was really where, um, negotiations just put it, uh, on, on, uh, spread this, the dollar amount around. So that was the main issue that backed, uh, of the impasse.
Excellent. All right, well, thank you for updating on, on your work on that as well. All right, and that does it for this meeting. I will take a motion, and we will.
I'm moved to adjourn and adjourn it all.
Second.
Motion in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries, thank everyone. Yeah, the committee of all is just in the boardroom, and we actually keep going. Got more stuff.